For the blood that was shed on the cross. I give you the glory and the honor and the praise and the thanks. It's his in holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, united with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go around the horseshoe and any community related announcements? Susan's not here, so...
I have a few, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Also, just want to remind everybody that pool passes for this summer are on sale now. April 13th, we will have the event called Covered in Color, which is a chalk event down in Charles Johnson Park. And then May 10th and 11th, made in Oklahoma at the Reed Center. And then one of the big events for the summer will be Star Spangled Salute, which will take place on June 1 and June 2 over at Tinker Air Force Base.
We have a busy summer. Let's see, anybody else?
Council of Presidents is this Saturday at Charles Johnson Building on Southeast 15th.
This is where all the presidents and anybody else that wants to attend, the neighborhood associations. We have 34 active neighborhood associations come together for a day of training. And it's always a great event put on by our Neighborhood Services and our Community Action Officers. With that being said, we've got a check presentation by the local Masonic Lodge. You guys want to come down to the podium?
Okay, on behalf of the Midwest City Lodge number 532, we are proud to present the Midwest City Police Homeless Resource Team, a check for $400 to go towards their homeless outreach projects.
I just want to tell you guys, okay, how appreciative we are. This program is actually, next month will be one year old in April that we started that. And we actually come, well, monthly, we go out, we look for people that are homeless and we identify and we offer them resources. And that's what this will go to for hygiene kits and just simple things that we take for granted that somebody living, you know, in the streets don't get. So it's, we'll put it to really good use and we are very appreciative and we thank you very much.
I think, are you, you're still on the tree? Tree board. Come on. Let's go tree board. You're on the tree board, too? I didn't know that.
I am, I've been here.
I didn't know Sherry was on the tree board. Imagine my surprise. Okay, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morgan proposed to Nebraska Board of Agriculture agriculture, a special day set aside for planting trees. Whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day and was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. They need it, they're flat. And is now observed throughout the United States and the world. Whereas trees are one of the most sustainable, cost-effective tools of fighting climate change, reducing topsoil erosion from wind and water, moderating the temperature, which cuts heating and cooling costs, cleaning the air and producing oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community by providing a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Midwest City is recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And we are, when we continue to plant trees by aligning this year's Arbor Day theme with Celebrate Arbor Day. So I therefore, Matt Duke, City, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim March 24th through the 30th as Arbor Week. We move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agenda so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of the council or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the same, aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into our discussion items on the agenda. We'll start with discussion item one.
This is PC 1984, Public Hearing with Discussion Consideration of An Ordinance to Amend The Tuscan Ridge Plan Unit Development, governed by the R6 Single Family Detached Residential District for the property described as a tract of land lying in the northwest quarter of Section 9 Township 11 North, Range 1 West of the Indian Meridian Midwest City, Oklahoma. Mr. Harless?
Thank you, Mr. Henson. The owners of this is Tuscan Ridge HOA with the, sorry. I'm new to the whole glass change thing, so CJB Holdings LLC. The applicant's Jason Emmett with Cedar Creek is the engineer. This amendment is being requested in order to add three additional lots for single-family residential development. The owners of Lot 10 within Tuscan Ridge Subdivision also own a large parcel of land to the south of Lot 10. The area, they are requesting this change in order to subdivide Lot 10 into two individual lots and two additional lots, south of Tuscan Ridge Subdivision and the PUD. The applicant in this case went out and met with the owners or the HOA of the PUD and there's a letter within your packets to state that they have the support of the HOA on this. This does create something that's a little bit different for the lots in the sense that most of the lots average just under an acre, 0.92 acres. This will add a lot of, a lot of a little over 10 acres, one at one acre, one at four acres, and one at three and three quarters acres. Planning Commission and Council recommend approval. I would like to compliment the Christensen's and staff for going back and forth on this. I know it was a, 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 a lot of, a lot of effort on everyone's part to add on to the end of a private road and create these lots to try to meet our ordinances and have the variety of lots on this. So there was a lot of effort on this and I'd just like to recognize those. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Christensen, do you want to step up?
Sure.
Either, I don't know which one to invite up, so. That one, huh? Have you had a chance, would you give us your name and address, please?
Jeremy Christensen, I live at 2416 Forest Glen Drive.
Have you had a chance to review the staff report?
I have, I've taken a look at it, it was very accurate.
Okay, so no comments, no questions?
No comments, I think Billy described it very well. Just looking to add three single units at the end there.
It's going to become a family affair over there, I guess, huh?
It's going to be an improved family affair.
Is there any further questions from the council? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the same, aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Second item?
This is PC 1985, Discussion Consideration of Approval, The Final Plaid of Timber Ridge Point Section, Timber Ridge Point, Section 4, described as a part of the southwest quarter of Section 12, Section 10 Township 11 North, Range 1 West. Mr. Harless?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Henson. This requested final plaid is a continuation of the Timber Ridge Point addition. The final plaid is consistent with the preliminary plaid that was approved for the entire area back in 2005. And this has been a long, large subdivision that's been in the process for a number of years and it's also exchanged ownership over those years. The application is being heard under the 1985 subdivision regulations as a preliminary plaid was approved under those regulations. The final plaid was heard on both October 2007 and October 2014. However, those approvals will become void as the final plaits were now filed with, were not filed within one year of approval of council as required by code. And usually this would be a situation where it would be pretty, pretty easy to just move forward with this. But since this has taken so, such a long time for the approval, other ordinances have come into play. And at the Planning Commission, a couple of people spoke up about some other issues, so I'd like to just go ahead and address those as we move forward. One of those is the lighting to the subdivision. And if you've been out there, you have, you notice that they have unique lighting, some of the fancy lighting. And the Homeowners Association is responsible for anything above and beyond the standard lighting that we have. And the city has been in contact with OGN to get that lighting installed. The other issue is that, that under the old subdivision regulations, the final plaque could be approved before the improvements were all in and installed. So that's why you're still seeing some construction of public infrastructure, or in this case, private infrastructure, which we inspect as the same. But those will not be, no how, building permits will not be issued until all those improvements are completed up to satisfaction and they're moving forward on those daily. And the other issue came up with the retaining wall. And so there seem to be a lot of, and understandably so, since the regulations have changed over that period of time, about the retaining walls. And I'll go ahead and, we added a supplement to this and to try to help clear up any misunderstandings. And one of them was that, that under the PUD, was it in the PUD about the retaining walls being on a private easement that was maintained by the HOA, the Homeowners Association in this case? And it said, was there a notice about the change of the PUD? And here's the copy of the notice that was sent out for that, the change of that PUD in 2008. And this is the staff report on the, on that PUD as it went forward under that public hearing. And the reason the notification is important because the surrounding property owners, who would be members of the HOA, would be notified in this case. And then here's some, some of the text out of that, that staff report that talks about the, and I'm sure that's difficult to read because I'm having trouble from here. But it basically talks about where there's a retaining wall that spans over multiple lots, that it will be put into a easement or an area, a common area, that will be maintained by the Homeowners Association. And why that's important in this case is because if you've been out there and if you've looked at some of these pictures, you'll see that the retaining wall spans several lots. And the reason that we changed that ordinance was because of incidences such as Turtlewood, where we've had, they come in and around a detention facility and put in a retaining wall that may be put in one property at a time. And when it, when it needs maintenance, there's not the ability to maintain that over, because you have to get all the property owners together, you're on individual lots. It just becomes really complicated. And so there was a lot of pressure to resolve that back in 2008. And we changed the ordinance in order to do that. And this is, this is where this was implemented in this, in the staff report. And then this is the same language highlighted there in green where it was in the PUD. And this is another notice that was sent out on, on, and the question was, do we, do we send out notices on, where the surrounding property owners notified on the preliminary plaits? By state law, it's not required, but we do it as a courtesy anyway, just as we do in the zoning, to put the surrounding property owners on notice that, hey, this is coming through and if you have anything that's arisen out of this that you have questions about, now's the time to address that. So this was the notice that went out. And then this is the one that went out in 14 for the, one of the previous, the previous final plaits. And so to give you an example of why, and this is, I have to go out this afternoon and take some pictures. And some of these are earlier pictures where they weren't corrected. But this is, this is what the ordinance was trying to address. And this is out of Turtlewood. And you see the length of the retaining wall and how it spans multiple properties. And when that starts to fail, how difficult that could be to replace all that and get maintenance on it because it's not in everybody's plans to fix a retaining wall at the same time that your neighbors need to fix the retaining wall. You're talking about mixing different contractors, different materials. And at that time, we also changed the ordinance to exclude railroad ties, timbers, wooden material, those type of things. And so this is, this is what we put in place for the ordinance to correct.
When did that change, Bill?
2008. And this is when, when some of these were going through, those final plaits were coming through. So, and again, we threw this together at the last minute. This is just the wording from the ordinance, talking about how it spans across the, if it spans over multiple property lines, that it'll be in a, a HOA easement, so it can be maintained. And this is what's, this is a, this is a result of that change in the ordinance. And this is taken today out of Timber Ridge, so I'm sorry, it's not taken today. This is to show the construction method that's, that is being done out there and how heavy duty this is and the requirements it's brought up, it's put into code. And then here's, here's an example. And the reason we chose this one is to show the length of, the length of the wall and then to be able to show the multiple fences that are down through there. So you can imagine that if, if this was the old wooden retaining walls, that once it started to fail, how difficult that would be to go and replace this. So, let's see. And, and so this is the plaid that's, that's being asked to be approved tonight. And the purple is all the areas that are common areas so that they can be maintained. Now, this does not include the lot, the retaining walls that are in between each lot. This is just the ones that are in the common areas. And then these are the ones that, the orange is the retaining walls, I'm sorry, the green is the retaining walls that have been completed to point. And then under construction are the ones in the yellow. And again, there's, there may need to be some details taken care of on those retaining walls because they haven't all been approved yet. And then there were some questions brought up as, hey, as the HOA, they didn't want to take care of the wall and the developer won't be around once the development is done because they set up things. I mean, it's not in their interest to, to maintain things long-term. They'll maintain them as long as they are selling houses and building lots. And that's just the nature of the business. But anyway, this is just some correspondence that was going back and forth to say, look, before these things are approved and before we can settle any of this, the HOA needs to know that there's some responsibility that, between the developer and the HOA to make sure that the wall and the mowing and the fence and some other issues need to be, to be taken care of long-term. And so anyway, it's, I can go through and read all those if you'd like. But at the end of it, it's Crafton Toll acknowledging that, hey, the HO, the HOA and the developer of Timber Ridge are talking on these issues to resolve those. So hopefully that clears up any, any questions that we may have, need to address on that. But certainly, we, we, Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on this. But I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions you may have on it.
It said in your report that the HOA and the developer, or they're supposed to have a meeting to work. Has that been done?
It's my understanding that they were moving forward with that. But the developer is here to talk about how that has gone or when that date is. We didn't, we were not notified of how that has proceeded. So it'd be certainly a question we should ask them.
Is the HOA in place now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the city attorney approved it, right?
I do not believe they did because that would have been under different ordinances. The, up until this last year or two, the city stance was to keep, be hands off of any HOA issues.
You know, there's a city ordinance that says the city attorney has to look at an HOA before the final plaid is approved.
Well, that's under the old subdivision regulation, or that's under the new subdivision regulation or new ordinance.
And I understand you said that since it's, it was in 2005, we're going under that.
Right.
But that there was two, there was two other plaits that you said that they didn't comply, correct? So they had to come back or they didn't get them turned in in time, right?
Right, and this, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Not picking on them, but why would we say that we're going to go under the ordinance from 2005 and then on the other hand, we're saying they didn't get their stuff done in a timely manner? So we're doing it different because it's kind of like we're making them do one thing and then we're not making them do the other.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure. The, the, in 2008's a significant date because of the financial crisis and those type of things. And development on a, on a quarter section that this is pretty close to takes a long time to do. And meanwhile, the city, meanwhile, the developer is out there moving forward at a risk of development. And so it is, it has been the court's opinion not to change the ordinances mid-development. So when they, when we do, when we agree as a city to do a preliminary plaid, then, then that is a handshake that you do it towards those ordinance moving forward. Now, we passed a retaining wall issue as an ordinance that directly affected this of how those things would be done. And so that's why we were able to enforce that on them.
So if, let's say if they're going to go build a completely different project, not this one, but if they came to us with a completely different one and hadn't gone to us before, that's when the city attorney would look at the HOA, correct?
Yes, and, and we would, and we would go to, if they came to a different, completely different project, we would then go back to a sketch plaid and preliminary plaid.
And I think that one of the questions Councilman Byrne had to do with the, okay, there, they did not file plaits in a timely manner. And that was why they had to come back and
Yes, sir.
refile. That was the issue for them.
They, they could have gone ahead and done that. They had a year to do that and for whatever reason, they chose not to.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk on this issue?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please tell us your name and your address.
My name is Joe Gibbs, I live at 13152 Chinkapin, Oklahoma. My home is one of them with the retaining wall behind it. And the problem I have is while they were developing their lot, they damaged my property and nothing has been done to date to try to fix it. I haven't received any emails, phone calls, or anything. I just hate to see this keep moving forward because it had numerous months to come in. And mine was one of the fortunate, I only lost one quarter. Some of my neighbors lost quite a bit of the fence due to the erosion. So it'd be nice if they'd just come in and repair that before they would move on. That's all I'd ask.
Patrick, can you help address that since it's finishing up the improvements out there?
Yes, I know the frustration that there's, you know, corners that erode and such. With a large-scale development like this, there's, there's always repairs associated with it. I'm disappointed that they're not in a timely manner enough that you needed to come up here and voice that. But it needs to be pointed out that nothing will be issued on this property until all of those issues are addressed. It's still an ongoing construction project. They're still going to have to backfill any fence repair, some additional amenities that will be on this new section of Timber Ridge. So I know they have, they have not addressed every one of those, but they're under the, they're in the process of doing that.
Okay. Did you have a list of those addresses, Patrick?
Yes, sir. Whenever I hear from one of the residents, we pour those on to the appropriate parties. We tell the developer. We also, if code or erosion control, stormwater issues come up, we notify them as well.
So this gentleman or any of his neighbors, if they haven't already notified you, should probably notify you by email that this is what the issue is.
They have, we have our HOA, they've told me that they've sent the gentleman my name and I think four other properties or four or six. I think they said in the email they'd sent back to me, they said they had forwarded that information.
Can somebody give him a piece of paper and pen so you can get his name and phone number and information?
Yes, of course. And yeah, if it's communicated us, we always make sure to communicate it to the responsible parties. And I'll, I will certainly get his information and we'll go specifically look at his, corner of his lot, see what's being done and update him as far as the timeline when they're going to repair that.
Well, I'll make one comment about the retaining wall that's out there. I went out there and looked at it. It is light years ahead of what
Yes, it is.
they did at Turtlewood. Light years ahead.
Yeah, it's too bad we couldn't have started with that over in Turtlewood.
Yes, the retaining wall, I've come back and looked at it, it's very, very nice. I didn't see any problem, but I thought they did that some job from what I know, but again, I didn't have a problem.
Thank you, sir, for being here this evening. Is the developer here? Do you guys have anything to address the council with?
Brad Reekins, Crafton Toll, 300 Fork Parkway Boulevard in Yukon. So there, the issue that we have is we've been in contact with the HOA. They have my email personally. They've been emailing me a list, actually got one more today that they said they had an issue after. The developer spoke with me, they have. They, they had a fence contractor lined up and he just backed out on them. We were trying to give them a time, we were getting a time from them. He backed out and said he wasn't going to be able to do it. They called a few more, we're having some issues with that. But they do have a plan to move forward. There's a fence that's going to be put on top of the retaining wall, so it's fairly high. And that common area is there. During construction, we did, we were notified that there was a problem with one of the lots. It was pretty extreme. We fixed that. This gentleman came to the Planning Commission meeting and it was the first that we'd heard that there were still ongoing problems. But the developers have 100% agreed to maintain the fences if they've been damaged due to their development. So as soon as we get the fence contractor that can get it repaired, we're going to get it fixed. I don't have a timeline on it just yet, like I said, because the one backed out was.
Thank you very much for doing that. It's greatly appreciated by this council.
Yeah. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer if you feel that it is. Yeah. Any other questions? I'd be happy to answer. I think Bill did a good job explaining the situation.
You satisfied with the staff report?
Yes.
No questions or concerns? Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? With that being said, entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, guys, for being here. We really appreciate it. Next item of discussion.
This is discussion consideration of approving a resolution defining the process and timeframe by which the council shall select the most qualified person to fill the impending vacancy in the office of the city manager.
Ladies and gentlemen, the council, uh, yeah, I hope it's a little bit more sophisticated than that. This is the, uh, from discussions I've had with all of you, it was the intent of the council to move forward as quickly as possible pending the resignation of Mr. Henson, to ensure the continuity of governments and also to alleviate any concerns of our 469 employees that work for the city of Midwest City. So the resolution that's attached to this is, uh, kinda outlines our, uh, method forward that, uh, will be taking applications or resumes from the, uh, from inside the city. Uh, those will be due by April 9th. And then at that point in time, council will, uh, go into executive session, establish interviews as needed and, uh, select and also go into negotiations, uh, contractually for the new city manager. Uh, with all that being said, are there any questions or discussion?
Just one question on the 23rd when we interviewed the prospective applicants. If we decide at that point that there's one that's head and shoulders above the other rest, can we make a vote to, to appoint that person then? Or are we gonna have to wait two more weeks to have another council?
We can go with our recommendation at that point. It will have to come back as an agenda item on the next council to approve.
The last, uh, paragraph of the resolution identifies that should the council feel the need for additional executive sessions, either more or less action on this, that this resolution can be modified to accommodate.
So if we decide on the 23rd that we wanted to hire Espy, we could hire Espy on the 23rd?
That's correct. Based, based, based on the resolution, that action can occur.
I like her too much to make her city manager.
Well, I, I wanna comment that I, I think that as a group, I don't, I haven't talked to everybody, but I think it's a, it's a smart move for us to look inside. We've got an excellent group of people that work in our city. Uh, we have to have room for advancement. That's the only way we're gonna keep people. And I think it would be wise to just follow with the resolution.
Thank you for his comments. Any other comments or discussion on this hearing? None. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item of discussion.
This is discussion consideration of reappointing Gary Perkins and Dale Milburn to the Plumbing Gas Mechanical Board for additional three terms and appointing a replacement for Travis Jernigan to the Plumbing Gas and Mechanical Board. I believe that the first item was done at the last meeting. Jill, did we reappoint? We did not. Okay.
Does anyone have any issues with these reappointments?
Well, we'll need it, we'll need one to replace Travis Jernigan then.
Travis Jernigan, okay. Or replacement from, does anyone have any suggestions?
I could get one, but, uh, I have it about next week.
So it would, it would be your, uh, it would be your desire to table this and bring it back with a, or a-
Do you want to vote for the two folks to appoint them?
You can. You can.
Yes. So you wanna put, vote on the two that we do have?
Yes.
Reappointments. So I would entertain a motion-
A motion to appoint Gary Perkins and Dale Milburn?
And come back with a suggestion. Next council with the, uh, other-
Motion to, uh, uh-
Um, no, we'll just bring that, bring that back.
Bring it back.
I would just, the motion to appoint those two.
I have a motion.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item for discussion.
This is discussion consideration of appointing replacements, replacements for Kenny Stevenson and Gary Bachman to the Traffic and Safety Commission.
Does anyone have any appointments?
Are those by, are those by war? Those are mayor books, I think. I think they're-
But I, I do have, uh, I, I've asked a person to serve and she hadn't got back with me yet. But I would entertain anybody else's name that you would like to throw at me. So with no appointments, uh, we'll, uh, table this and bring it back. Next item of discussion.
Well, we need a motion.
Our motion-
Before we do that, Mayor, sorry. Can you send an email or have Jill send an email? If your one person says yes, that way the rest of us know which one position is, that we need to try and find-
I'll make sure that happens tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
So I do, uh, need a motion to-
Motion to what?
To table.
Why don't you take no action?
Or we can do that, correct?
Either, either way.
Just take no action. We'll take no action on this. Next item of discussion.
This is, uh, discussion consideration of appointing a replacement for Tom Jordan on the Builders Advisory Board.
Jeff, Joe Bryant? And he said he would serve? Uh, Joe Bryant?
Do they have to be residents of the city?
They either need to be residents or actively in the building business within the city. And Joel, I believe, lives in Midwest City and-
I've got a, uh, motion indicating Joe Bryant. I've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item for discussion.
This is discussion consideration of passing an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code to increase penalties in Chapter 1, Section 1-15, specific penalty for violations of code stemming from repeated violations to Chapter 24, Section 24-203, residential parking restrictions, and Chapter 27, Section 27-2, declared unlawful penalties. Section 27-28, accumulation of rubbish declared a nuisance penalty. Section 27-44, dumping refuse on property of another and deleting Section 27-13, administrative expenses and deleting Section 27-62 penalties and providing for repealer and severability and declaring an emergency.
And this ordinance is, uh, Ward 1's ordinance that, uh, basically for frequent flyers in code enforcement, uh, increasing the penalties and, uh, and taking, hopefully deterring some of the issues that we're currently having. So is there any discussion on this ordinance?
Is, this is under Mike Stroh's group, right?
Uh, most of the enforcement action will be taken by Mr. Stroh.
Mike, do you have, before we vote on this, would you like to say anything? Other than present?
Now, we, uh, we discussed this, as you stated, with Ward 1, with Ward 2, and with Ward 4, um, trying to, uh, target some of the, as the mayor put it, repeated offenders. So it's always on.
Speak up.
Um, so, uh, we think it's good. It, it actually is lowering the fine for the first offense, which I think is worth noting. Um, code enforcement, um, you can get caught by circumstances that are out of your control. You had a emergency in the family, et cetera, so you left town or whatever. So, um, the discussion was for a first offense to try to give more of a break, but for second and third and additional then to, to try and, and go after that. So, um, we're fine with it. We're, we're trying to make sure our new software that we're going to builds in that checks and balances for us so that we can keep the tabs on it.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. I'll need two votes on this ordinance. One, pass the ordinance, and also the second to declare emergencies. So with that being said, is there any further discussion? I entertain a motion?
Motion to pass?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Now, I need a motion declaring an emergency.
Motion to declare an emergency, all in second.
Second, one of us.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone in the public or in the audience have anything that they wish to discuss with council? Hearing none, there are, uh, three issues, uh, that are on the agenda for further, uh, information. Is there any questions or comments?
Is this the final deal on the animal, the ordinance to review, all the ordinances for the animal control? Or is this just a part of it?
No, I believe this is all of it, isn't it?
Okay. One of the issues that got us the most questions was the chickens. It hasn't changed, correct? We're not doing anything to it, or are we?
We are.
In what?
On the large animals.
Okay. What are we doing for that?
Let me go to that section here. If you go, if you go to your, uh, information that's provided on, uh- Section 6, A-42. It says, in new language, says that horses, mules, donkeys, goats, sheep, cattle, and other similar-sized large animals, except swine, may not be kept on any parcel of land containing an area of less than one acre in size and must be fenced properly according to what's Section A-44. That's new language. For those parcels with a net acreage of one, two, or three, properly enclosed acreages, the maximum number of two large animals per whole net acre may be kept. An additional large animal will be kept for each additional one-fifth acre above three acres. Let me give you an example. If you had five acres, you could possibly keep 16 large animals, and that would be the max in the city.
Chief, I think he was asking about chickens.
Okay, that's under the, uh, the Section 7 under sanitation standards. And this was actually brought up by, uh, Councilman Reed's representative, uh, Sidney Boyd. He's the one who actually addressed this for us. The new language in there talks about that it shall be the duty of owner or leasing of a property where animals are fouled or kept to maintain and operate the housing and premises in such a manner as not to create a health nuisance or disturb, repose of the other person living on properties not of that of the animal owner. This includes proper disposal, cleanup of all refuse, including but not limited to feces, feathers, and any other remnants involved in keeping or rendering of such animals. You go on down to, uh, it's unlawful to dump, uh, replacing large amounts of manure. I can't remember if there's any more additions to that. Let's see the next page. But the, but the numbers are the same as far as, but there's more responsibility on the owner as far as the sanitation requirements.
Right. Um, I was on the committee for that. And they didn't wanna, um, impose a, uh, limit on how many chickens they could have. So, uh, we looked at that and we talked about it. And everybody agreed that, um, that was what we wanted to do. And it was the best thing for everybody to do, to be, put it back on the person who's got the animals that are not properly enclosed.
Who's gonna enforce this?
It would be us, be complaint-driven too.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously if someone calls in, we would enforce it. Animal welfare would. Uh, let me give you the process synopsis real quick. We had two meetings. Uh, Councilman Bowen, Alan, and Jeff Moore were on the committee along with representatives from different wards. And I do wanna say thank you to our council people and also to Amy Otto, Lindsay Hutchinson, Kim Templeton, Ronald Stille, and Bo Peeler, and Sidney Boyd, who were our representatives from different wards. They met. Uh, this is the information that come up as a recommendation to the council mayor to approve or disapprove or make additions. But this is the final format. We rechecked with our, our members that were appointed by council. They agree. This is the final draft from their perspective. I think our council members, Mr. Moore, Ms. Allen, Ms. Bowen, are you, you concurrence with that?
I had one question. Brandon, go back to the large animal. Do y'all remember, was it the fenced area, wasn't it, that had to be an acre? Are you saying the full net, if the house sits on one acre-
It has to be properly fenced.
They have to, so with one acre properly fenced?
One, two, three, five.
But no less than one acre?
Correct.
Okay. Cause we talked about, you know, most of the lots, if the house sits in the middle of the lot, tech, I mean, most of the lots would have to be a two-acre lot to have, cause you can't put your fence in front of your house. So if the back half of the lot is fenced, then you need to have one net acre. So that's, that's the way you have it, right?
And I know, uh, our city attorney was there, also with our, with our city clerk. They were present too. Is that correct? Anything you wanna add to that?
No, I'm, there was a lot of discussion. The ordinance has its, um, presented, was the consensus through a lot of, I think, Mr. Moore and Ms. Allen, um, would concur. A lot of heated discussion. And it was, uh, extensive, um, arguments over what the final, uh, resolution would be on these issues. And this was the committee's recommendations.
So I'll go back to your question. Councilman Byrne, are, is the council satisfied with the, with the foul section? I think the large animals are addressed. I think the fouls-
I, the foul, I was the foul-bringer upper. Um, I believe that when we impanel a group to come together to come up with something, I might not agree with how the outcome comes on the foul, because I think it's kinda foul. But I think that we should follow the recommendation of the count, of that, of that group. Because we told them to go forth and come back and they did. We should follow it.
There has been a lot of work on this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I appreciate the work from everybody that was on the committee, you, everybody that did the work. And I agree with 95% of it. And we just vote for it, I think.
I'd like to say-
We don't, it'll come back to council, uh, next council for approval.
I would just like to say that this also was citizens involved with this. So they had their input also about, you know, their expectation. So, you know, we listen to everyone. But of course, the fouls, I understand what you're saying, but it also indicates that if it's a nuisance, a health nuisance, that there would-
Yeah, what I said was I agree with it. Okay.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the further information? Thanks, Brandon. This, again, this will be coming back to council for approval in next council meeting. That being said, any further discussion? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. A call, uh, a call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. Uh, we do have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda. So trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience, which discuss an item to be heard or removed and heard in regular order.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the new business public discussion of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the, the authority?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Mr. Nito come up and give you a briefing on the, on the issue that was recently processed.
Hello, Mr. Nito.
Thank you.
I appreciate the chance to come down and give you an update. We did move forward with the refinancing bond issue that we had structured to develop funds for the Reed Center and the hotel convent, I mean, the hotel conventions or expansion or remodel. Um, we were really excited about how it turned out. We have- We have 30-year debt with netting $11.5 million.
Wow.
And it turns out that the interest rate is about a three-point, roughly 3.6% for 30-year fixed debt. That's pretty amazing. And with an eight-year call, and it's about $15,000 less than what we are currently paying. We went from about $1,808 on the existing bonds. Now, we did stretch it out, but we're about $1,993, or $1,793, excuse me. So it's about that much less each year. We're excited about the situation. We were able to reprice, which means we brought, the market was moving in our favor and we came down 10 basis points in two days, just from where we originally started out. The news in the market and what's called flight to quality made us, and we were about the only type of bond being offered that week of this quality. This week, if we'd have gone this week, we've got more competition with Oklahoma City and Edmonds and different entities, but we were the focal point of last week. So that's basically the update. We were very excited. You should have had money about the second week in April. And something that I just addressed with the guy also, there's what's called a flat yield curve, and we can turn right around and invest those proceeds, both your GOBonds that you'll have April 1st and the proceeds off this bond issue, at probably close to 2% to 2.5% during construction. So that's quite a turnaround from a year ago when it was a quarter or her less.
Wow.
So that's basically it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to address those also.
We can't do that for a long period of time, though. We have to deliver on these projects within three years.
You do, yes, sir. Let's do it. Get it while it gets good.
Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move into the new business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. A call to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have three discussion items.
First item is discussion consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 12, 2019, as submitted. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Second item.
Discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy, guidelines, and objectives. No action is necessary on this this evening. Third item is discussion consideration to enter into a contract to purchase 2905 North Woodside Drive from Felix &amp; Allen, Allen, Inc., for a total cost not to exceed $121,000 to authorize payment for the purchase price and closing costs and to authorize the chairman to execute all documents associated with this transaction. Mr. Coleman's here if you have any questions.
And this is the property north on the woodside to facilitate the new animal control shelters, correct?
Exactly. And we have an agreement to pay them $121,000 for the property, and we'll pick up the closing cost. Thus far, we've had a Phase 1 environmental site assessment done, and it's cleared that, so we're prepared to go to closing, which should be between 60 to 90 days.
What was moved in the house?
The owners would like to move both of the structures off the property, which will save us some money, and we have agreed to do that prior to closing.
And whose expense?
Theirs. If they're left, we'll demolish it, but they prefer to move.
Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Coleman? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Good job, Robert.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the new business public discussion of the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. And I call to order the Midwest City Economic Development Authority. We have one discussion item.
This is discussion consideration of approving the minutes of the special meeting of February 12, 2019, as submitted.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
And the executive session is not required this evening.
Okay. We now move into the new business public discussion of the authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here this evening.